Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 16th Public Works Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Evacuation exits are in the back on either side. This is not on, yes. Okay. I'll just speak louder. Mr. Gavin, staff recognition. I'm just speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very special recognition tonight. We would like to recognize Nurse Lanning and Principal Pascarella from Watson School. Would they please stand up and be recognized? I like how everyone claps already. They don't even know what you did yet. But, so stay standing, thanks. But, a few weeks ago, we had one of our residents passed out right on the, basically like half a block away, not even half a block away, but like right by the school during dismissal. Both Nurse Lanning and Jen Pascarella were able to go outside. They assessed the situation, they called 911, and I really kudos to both of them because this person who passed out and was not doing well, and the ambulance came and was still not doing well, I'm very happy to say that he is doing well now. And it's because of their attention and care. It's never easy in an emergency situation, and I was really happy to see how cool, calm, collected both were. I mean, it was an emergency, they came in, this is what we need to do. Our nurse took over, and Jen was able to coordinate the emergency response, and between that and the rest of everyone at Watson who always pitches in, they really did a terrific job. So I wanted to thank you both, and I'm sure that the board may wish to thank you as well.
Yes, to echo Mr. Gavin on behalf of the board, we are always grateful for the work you two do every single day, and this day in particular, your heroic efforts and your support. So thank you so much.
We have to do a picture. Was that the same day?
Yes, yes, it was.
I must have blocked that part out. Congratulations, guys, you guys did a great job.
Thank you again.
I totally forgot that was in the middle of the near biblical flood that we experienced.
Thank you again. All right, Mr. Gavin, we have some very special guests from the Ed Foundation here tonight.
That's right. We are also happy to welcome our partners from the Rockville Center Ed Foundation here to our meeting this evening. We have both President Maida Kramer and Director Jean Harris. We are going to, I'm going to ask Nicole, Dr. Moriarty, to go over some of the things that we, for our grants here tonight, and then we'll call you guys up for our donations.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So the Ed Foundation, as many of you know, has been a wonderful partner with us in the education of all of our students here at Rockville Center schools. This past year, we've had two grant cycles, and in both, the grants that were awarded were enriching and engaging for all of our students. We are so very grateful for the thought of having two grant cycles instead of one, we were able to do so much more in one year. So we are joined tonight, as Mr. Gavin said, by Maida Kramer and Dr. Jean Harris, as well as a whole bunch of other Ed Foundation members, all of whom really truly love our district and love our children so very much. This deep passion, you can feel and is palpable at every single one of our meetings, and they really do work tirelessly to make sure that our kids get a little bit extra every single year. We are also joined tonight by two grant recipients, Mr. Rodriguez, they were writers and recipients of our grants, so Mr. Rodriguez and Mrs. Rice. They are two joined by their colleagues, who are here to share the opportunities our students were able to engage in as a result of this partnership. The two grants that we're going to highlight tonight was for our fifth grade district-wide class experience, where our students were able to simulate a business community, which promoted an understanding of our world of business and economics in a real-life simulation at Commerce Plaza. Another major grant that was awarded was to our district-wide FLESS teachers, where all of our learners were immersed in the colors of Frida, which was a very lively and engaging performance, where students were able to immerse themselves in Spanish, and they were able to ask questions of the characters, the actors, and they were able to share their experiences of understanding and learning Frida as well. So we thank all of you very, very much for your dedication, your partnership, and we can't wait to hear more of what you have to say tonight.
So we'd like to invite Maida and Director Harris.
Maida and Dr. -- yeah, thank you.
I'm Maida Kramer. This is Jean Harris. Thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you about the Ed Foundation. As Dr. Moriarty said, this is, Ed Foundation is a really exciting place to be, because we get to raise money and give it back to all the students in the district. Our mission is just that, to raise money for innovative and enriching program that goes above and beyond what the curriculum can offer, or it seeds a brand-new program that hopefully is successful, and the district will then take it forward and continue to fund it. We have a perfect example tonight of that. Melissa Rice's grant proposal for the Commerce Plaza, which we'll hear more about in a minute, is going to be funded going forward, so that all fifth-grade students will eventually have an opportunity to go to Commerce Plaza. And I just have to say one word before Melissa comes up here and says a few words. Her class was nice enough to write thank-you notes to us, and they were absolutely incredible. These kids, you can just tell the enthusiasm and the love and how much they got out of this project. One student even wrote, "Now I understand why my parents are so tired at night." I mean, it was things of that nature that just brought a smile to your face, made you laugh, but deep down inside, you could see how much the students gained from this experience of learning to write checks, and we'll allow Melissa to talk a little more about it in a minute. The nice thing about, you mentioned we have two grant cycles, and in keeping with our two new grant cycles, which is great, because we get to implement these programs that we approve in the spring, get implemented in the fall, and then can hopefully sneak into that budget come January, February, when you're going through budget season, and then they'll be adopted by the school district forever. But the, it gave us an opportunity to also add a fall fundraiser to our program, which is new for the first time, and I'm going to let Jean talk a little bit about that.
Thanks. I do want to point out that photos that are showing on the screen are all from Ed Foundation grants, so if you see your child, your neighbor's child, your niece, your nephew, whoever, these are all things that have been funded by the Ed Foundation. Typically, the Ed Foundation had one fundraiser, it was in the spring, and it took a while for programs to get implemented, because we had the summer, and then they had to come back in the fall, and so on and so forth. So anyway, the idea came up, I believe it was last year, it feels like yesterday, but it was like last year, we decided to do a fall grant cycle, we got some exciting grants, we were able to fund them, and then we also did the spring. And then we looked at our budget and said, we probably want to raise a little bit more money, because we have these two cycles going. So at last, at last spring's gala, we had school auction items, which we typically did, the free homework pass, the extra recess, parking at the high school for a student for a week, reserved parking at the high school for a student for a week, and different things. But many thanks to our new central administration, because they were not to be outdone by anyone. They came up with some really exciting things, brain freezes, where I think we have some of our servers right up there, for the whole school, ISIS for the whole school.
We have outfits now.
They had outfits, right. I don't think we can repeat that this year due to food allergies, et cetera, et cetera. But we also had superintendent for a day, superintendent's cabinet for a day. Mary Lou was instrumental in getting the kids official IDs and hard hats that were personalized, and they got on a bus, and they went from school to school, and they had their checklists to evaluate playgrounds and different things. So they too got an idea of what it's like in the day of an administrator. So, we decided to pull those school items, because we would get bids, but we were dependent upon who came to the gala in the spring to bid on them. So we decided to pull So we decided to pull just the school-related items and put them into School-a-Palooza, which is going to be, um, our fall online auction. And it will be available to people Monday, right Kathy? We're hoping, first time out. Monday, you'll be able to preview it, see what's up, see what the bidding prices start at, et cetera, et cetera, and then the Monday after Thanksgiving, we will go live, and you can start bidding. And then it ends December 4th. There are, I think, close to 50 different items, because we have, as I said, the homework passes, we have the, um, extra recess, we have principal for a day, the superintendent for a day, the superintendent's cabinet, we have munching with McGinn, which is pizza lunch with Ms. McGinn and, um, your child, and four or so friends for sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. We have VIP seating courtside for the boys' high school basketball game on a Friday night. One of our favorites that I've asked to be a spectator at is the cornhole competition at the elementary schools. Each principal will be a member of the team, and then the child whose family was the winning bidder, they will be the covert team, the Watson team, the Wilson team, and they will play each other. Another fun one from the administration, the voice of "Snow Day, School Is Closed" message, right?
That's a big one, that's a big one.
Okay, but I do want to emphasize, these are for the children, okay? These are for the children.
I can see Darren bidding for that one.
I know, right? So again, we're very excited, um, I can see some wheels turning already, people saying, "Oh, that would be great, that would be great," but there are those of us whose kids have gone through the school district already, but you can also bid and then donate, if you're the winning bid, you can donate that item back to the school, or back to central administration and say, "Okay, let's, let's find someone to, um, benefit from this, this prize." So, um, we've raised almost a million dollars since we've begun as the Ed Foundation. I, I mean, we're close, we are close. So please help us get over that mark. In the fall would be nice, but if I have to wait till the spring, I'll wait. And really, that's about it. So be on the lookout for your School-a-Palooza email blast, that's coming from the district, and...
Thank you, too.
Yes, the cooperation is phenomenal, and if you are an RVC Ed Foundation supporter, attendee, you'll also get an email blast, so you might get a couple of them. They lead to the same place, so that's not a problem. And, um, again, we consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to do this, to give back to the district. So, um, it's all for the kids.
And so, and tonight, we're here, um, before we get to, back to the grants, and the real reason why we're here, I also just want to announce that our gala this year will be April 6th, Saturday, April 6th. Again, we will be at Gatsby at the Ocean, down by Jones Beach, it was a beautiful location last year. We were fortunate to get a light show from the lightning outside, which kind of added to the evening, it was very cool. And this year, yeah, each year we honor community members and educators. This year, we are so fortunate to honor two educators that you all know, and hopefully you all love. We're gonna be honoring Darren Raymar and Brian Zuar, and we are really, really excited about it. You think it's, you think it's gonna be a party to top other, many other parties with that dynamic duo? Now we have a new theme! But, so, we hope we can see you there in the spring. So why are we really here tonight? To talk about our grants. We're here to give you, present to you the money we raised in the spring, um, for the grants, and to bring up our amazing staff, Melissa Rice, Freddie Rodriguez, and I apologize, I don't know all your names, but the Fles, the Fles staff, please come up here, tell us a little bit about your grants, uh, we know the kids love them, tell everybody else about them. Thanks.
Darren neglected to mention the speaking part, but luckily, all off the cuff. So the long story short, um, I was out to brunch with my daughter, who was in fifth grade last year, and a bunch of her friends from sleepaway camp, and one of the girls, Charlotte, was telling me all about this trip she went to, where she got to work at Capital One Bank, and she wrote checks, and she learned so much, and she was just going on and on, and I'm like, "Where is this, and why have I never been there?" So immediately on that Monday morning, I marched into Jen Pascarella's office, I told her everything about the website, I had already called and left four messages, um, which led me to Dr. Moriarty, and we were just all so excited that I got that grant in just in time, um, because I felt like every fifth grader needed to experience the Commerce Plaza, having my own fifth grader at the time. My daughter thought that money was just a button that you press on your cellphone, and magically, it just appeared. So I knew that I had a lot of work to do at home, building, you know, financial literacy, um, and I just assumed it was an issue for everybody. So what, what really appealed to me was, um, they give you lessons to do with the kids before you go to this experience. So, you know, we taught them how to write a check, what a business might need to get started. We did, um, a station rotation, learning about credit cards and loans and investments, and we each took one, and I got the credit card group. And we were able to have these real conversations about financial literacy, and I've always been a huge advocate and proponent of DECA at the high school, and I love seeing what my former students do there, so it seemed like a natural thing to start at the end of elementary school. So with Jen and Nicole's support, um, I wrote the grant, and, um, we were able to schedule, which was a nightmare, all of the elementary schools to be able to go this calendar year. So Watson was able to go first, so if you look, you'll see some, some pictures. We were able to get all those lessons in before we went in October, and our students loved it. Oh my God, Nurse Lanning was there! And it was amazing, you literally walk in to a functioning town, and the kids applied for jobs that they had already, we had already given them their jobs, so when they got there, they went to their place of business, they learned what it was about, and they literally spent the whole day working. And they loved it. From the IKEA shop to Coen's Walk-In Clinic, um, to the, it was, it was amazing. And they're still talking about it today, and they really kind of got it, like Maida said, like, a lot of the letters were like, "Now I, I get it." Like, you have to work hard to earn that, those dollars. They were given paychecks and little debit cards, and they were able to buy, um, some stuff at Commerce Plaza, and it was just really a valuable experience, and I'm really grateful to the Ed Foundation that every fifth grader is gonna get a chance to go this year, and even more grateful to Dr. Moriarty and the entire administration, because I, I think we're, we're gonna be going again, um, and building more relationships and, and making this even bigger. So it was just a really great experience, and, you know, we can't thank you enough, you know, I have a long history with the Ed Foundation, at, yes. I ask for money a lot, and, um, but it, they have always funded, like, everybody's ideas and been so supportive and so amazing, and this was just, you know, an amazing experience for everybody, and I look forward to hearing about the other schools' trips to Commerce Plaza. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Freddie Rodriguez, Carrie Stogsdill, Nicole Jones, and Jeanette Rodriguez, no, we're not married. So I have to back it up, uh, February of 2020, before the world turned upside down, uh, Covert does a really nice literacy week, and, um, they were gracious enough to give me a bilingual-themed literacy week, which I have been asking for years. And, um, Darren was very gracious through his, um, Raymar Children's Fund to fund this amazing theater group that I had found online from the Lower East Side, uh, they're called Teatro Seja, and they put on these wonderful programs, um, and, uh, shows for kids bilingual and, um, in Spanish. This one was on Frida, and, um, I have always been a lover of art, and I know through our, um, art program here in Rockville Center, the kids study, um, Frida through her self-portraits, so they're already coming with a background knowledge of who this person is, or who she was. And, um, then we were able to make lessons, uh, geared to their, the specific topics that they were learning about, like, the colores, the colors. We were, did cognates describing Frida, um, and then on the upper level, fourth and fifth grade, uh, they were able to actually, you know, say information about her, where she was from, when she was born, um, and things like that. And they were just amazing. And then the kids got to show that off, um, at the actual performance. The Paola, the Frida, she, uh, had a question-and-answer period for the kids to be able to show off this information that they were able to learn, um, through us, and what they already knew also. So we were very thankful for the Ed Foundation for this. It started off as just Covert through Darren, and then resubmitted the grant, um, had my fingers crossed, because I was like, "This is gonna be too much money," and, um...
Every single elementary school.
Every, every elementary school was able to see this wonderful program, and it was a good way for us to begin the year, um, because we got to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, um, and it's a great way also, because we have so many students who are from so many different, um, Latin American countries, who speak Spanish, and they were also able to just show themselves off in a different way. So we were thankful for you guys, and thank you so much.
So I, I hope that gives everybody a little flavor and taste of why we do what we do, because look at that level of enthusiasm, and it starts with our staff bringing these programs to our students. It's just really absolutely fantastic, the, um, the excitement, the enthusiasm, and thanks to the support of the administration, all of the parents in the school district, and even the wider community, we are able to raise money to do this for the students. It's really special. So tonight, we're here to give you our, as I said, our money from the spring. We have, uh, our check for $27,000. Twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Very excited to be able to donate this, this is for seven grants, um, two of which you heard about tonight. So I invite the rest of the Ed Foundation members to come up. Anybody want to say anything? Please.
I will.
Yes. Why don't you, we'd love the staff to come and look at you.
Can we get everyone in? to go, um, I just want to say, you know, how important it is that we had three different, very important skills highlighted through these grants. So we had the, the skill of financial literacy, which is something that needs to happen across the K-12 continuum. So we're super excited about that, it actually lines up with a lot of the things that we want to do here at the high school and at the middle school, and where New York State is going, you know, in terms of the new recommendations, which I'll talk about shortly. The other piece with that is, and this is what I love, and I think Freddie said it beautifully, the idea that our, all of our students had a chance to shine in a cultural experience where their culture was being, was being showcased. And the other component with that is, is, that's also, New York State is focused on bi-literacy, and the idea that our students need to be able to speak, all of our students need to be able to speak more than one language. And then finally, the idea of, of Fraticcolo as, as a whole, in terms of art and creativity. This is a super important component that we need to embed in education. It can't just be, write something all the time. It has to be, it has to be where students get the opportunity to take what's in here and create a physical manifestation of it. So art, so the idea of, of financial literacy, bi-literacy, and cultural, cultural experience and exposure, I really thank the Ed Foundation for their generosity. As they said, it's nearly been a million dollars, um, which is unbelievable, I've never worked in a district before where I've even heard of that level of generosity. So it's a, really a testament to the community and to the dedication that people have in their support for the school. So thank you very much.
Again, to echo Mr. Gavin on behalf of the board, we love the partnership that we have with the Ed Foundation, and you say that you're grateful for the district, and we are all grateful for all of you. I wrote down creative and dynamic, so all of you that are here are creative and dynamic, the teachers and the work and the grants, creating these real-life experiences for our students that they wouldn't otherwise have, and within the budgetary limitations, so thank you so much. And bringing these new real-life experiences to add on to, creative and dynamic also to the Ed Foundation, adding a grant cycle last year, and now adding Fall-a-Palooza, which we're all very excited about. And again, making those connections to the school buildings and our students, really important, and those are memories that will last a lifetime. So thank you all for being here, and thank you again for the generous gift. And I have a motion to accept the gift.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Now, if you've got nothing going on, you might go catch Peter and the Star Catcher, that's right, another shameless plug.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. As I alluded to, congratulations to the cast and crew of Peter and the Star Catcher. Opening night is, as we speak. I am encouraging everyone to come out and see the show. Dr. Downing, Dr. Walsh, and I all had the opportunity to catch a sneak preview of the show last night, and we all walked away impressed. Congratulations to Pam Seidman and all of our thespians for their creativity and collaboration. You can see the show both Friday night and Saturday night, please see our website for details and for tickets. I know we already did an all-district blast, where, um, you can have it right on your phone, and you can buy your tickets and download your tickets right off the bat. I also want to thank Mark, Mark Pomontieri, our video and sound technician, who has been running around like, um, he's been on fire the last few days, because not only is he setting up all the audio and visual for the show, he's also setting up all the audio and visual here, and he's really been doing a great job. He has, is a new addition to us, um, he took over for Bob Kroger, who had been with us for 50 years, and he's really been, um, a wonderful addition to our faculty and to our, our community. So thank you, Mark, I know he's listening somewhere in the ceiling somewhere, probably. So thank you, Mark. For our sports programs, uh, uh, we have had an excellent fall. Our fall sports teams at Southside High School continue to put in impressive seasons. Our girls' cross-country team won its fourth straight county title. Our seniors have never lost for our girls' cross-country team. Our girls' soccer team, congratulations on their county championship, and they lost the heartbreaker in the Long Island championship as well. Congratulations to all our county and state qualifying swimmers and divers for their performance this year, and our Cyclone football team is in the county championship tomorrow evening at 7:30 at Hofstra against Flora Park. All are welcome to come out and enjoy a beautiful evening of football, our pep band will be there as well. We will be honoring, so the board knows, we will be honoring all of our fall athletes at the December 14th board meeting. I also wanted to provide an update on Hewitt's traffic situation. As an update, we are waiting on a response from Nassau County as to when they will be able to update the light timings on the corridor of Hempstead Avenue in DeMont. One of the promises that the county has made is to make that an all-stop intersection, which will allow our parents and students the opportunity to cross, those that need to cross two, uh, two streets, uh, two streets at the same time. So we, uh, I met with Deputy Mayor Baxley, uh, again today, and we are both pressing the county to confirm, uh, when we can get moving and confirm that, that change will indeed happen. I also want to remind our parents and faculty to complete our priority survey, we will be sending out a reminder tomorrow... We will be sending out a reminder tomorrow to our parents and teachers. We want to include as many voices as possible in helping the board and I set our priorities and our strategic plan and vision for the district. The survey closes on November 30th. If you did the survey on your home computer, it will not let you do like 20 on the same home computer. But if your husband wants to do one, or somebody else wants to do one, or you know somebody who may have not gotten the link, or may have a student that will be eligible for pre-K and they're a neighbor of yours, the link is on the website as well. So if anyone wants to find the link, it's right on our homepage, you know, and we welcome your voices to this conversation. I am also pleased to announce that our first elementary hackathon will be taking place at Wilson on Friday, January 26th, from 10:30 to 12:00. I want to thank all of our hackathon moderators and particularly Mr. Duffy and Dr. Moriarty for trying to put this all together. We will be having an inter-district teams from each of the schools coming together and having a competition on coding challenges. And if you've never seen something like this, it's basically like risk for computer coding. So you have to capture territories based on how successful you are at completing the coding challenge. So we are super excited for our first intersquad elementary hackathon. So that is really fun. It'll be again Friday, January 26th, from 10:30 to 12:00. As the board knows, that was a recommendation of our goal from last year. That was a result from one of our goals from last year, which was to take a look at K-12 computer technology. I also want to talk briefly, and I want to thank Ms. Ramsey and Dr. Walsh for helping me to conduct our ninth grade focus group this past week. We had a wonderful conversation with our ninth graders, and they gave us important feedback about how we can improve our transition plan from the middle school to the high school. I can tell you that a few bagels in, everyone was all suggestions. And the kids really were great. They gave us, you know, thoughtful perspective on the things that they were worried about coming into high school and the way that they were addressed. The thing that I was very happy to hear from all the students was that they felt supported. Again, similar to what we heard from the middle school, that if they had somebody to ask, if they needed to ask a question, they found somebody to ask, and they were, you know, comfortable in going to do that. I also want to thank Ms. Ramsey, because I know she's already met, is meeting with Ms. McGinn too, to set up a series of different activities that our eighth graders can go through over the spring months that will give them a better sense of what Southside High School is all like. So I know we already had our play, went down to the high school and performed like a 20-minute scene down there so that all of our young thespians at the middle school can see what it's like when you get to the high school. So you'll see a bunch of different types of activities that our high school people, whether it's sports, or band, or music, or languages, will go down to the middle school and kind of basically tell them, this is what's coming next. So we're really excited about that, and I want to thank all of our students for that. This past Monday, the New York State Board of Regents hosted a presentation from the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures. The commission, which began in 2019, presented the regents with a list of 12 recommendations about potential changes to graduation requirements. Contrary to some things that people may believe, is that this does not mean that all regents exams will go away. You know, that needs to be stated, it needs to be openly stated, it needs to be repeatedly stated. It does not mean that they are getting rid of regents. It also does not mean that any of the recommendations have yet been enacted by the Board of Regents. So there is a number of different steps that need to take place. I encourage everyone to go look at the document. I found it was a very interesting read about some of the things that they are recommending that I think we're very well positioned to meet, should there become new requirements. So one of the things that we do really well here at Southside is provide a rigorous academic program. And I'm very confident that we will be able to meet the, the new requirements, you know, head-on. The thing that I do like, and what I, what I am excited about, is the idea of some flexibility in how we meet those requirements. So that might mean us taking a look and a deep dive into potentially new courses. That might mean looking at the way we assess current courses and coming up with alternatives. The other piece that I'm very excited about is they want students to have some sort of a work or job experience, and they would be able to get credit for. I don't know how that may come out, and I don't know if it would be adopted, but it is something that we find very interesting. And I think would be, again, it's kind of in line with what our students said last year when they said they wanted things, they wanted to learn things that mean something in the real world. Our high school and middle school kids said that pretty, pretty out loud. And I'm glad to see that, you know, at least the recommendations thus far seem to be exciting in that way. What I'm hopeful for is that they don't look to sacrifice rigor for flexibility. So we want our diplomas to mean something. We want our students to be prepared for college and other types of activities past high school. And so we will make us that promise that we will continue to provide that kind of experience here at Southside. And finally, I wish all of our families, faculty, and staff a healthy and happy and restful Thanksgiving break. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Tonight, we have a presentation on student data from the high school. Mr. Gavin?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Dr. Walsh and Ms. Liz, what did I just say? Liz, sorry. Ms. LaCrosse to come up and present on our high school performance data from last year. And I apologize, Liz, sorry. And Ben Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. And thank you to the Board of Education and Central Administration for welcoming us tonight to talk a little bit about the student achievement data from the 2022-2023 school year at Southside High School. So before I begin, I'd like to share a quote that I shared with our faculty on our October 5th professional learning session where we reviewed data from the previous school year. The message is, data is not about adding more to your plate. Data is about making sure you have the right things on your plate. I think that's a really important distinction for us to keep in mind as we move forward, knowing that data is about continuous improvement, making sure we're efficient with the work that we do, and ultimately making experiences better for students. So our mission statement is our guiding philosophy, and it grounds us in the work that we do each and every day. So it's important to reference and acknowledge it. This also is an image that I've used over the last two years as my role in principle with our faculty. It really sums up what my philosophy and vision is for working in a school and what that's all about. So working in a school is great because we have so many different people that are involved, and they all do different things throughout the course of the day. But what's really cool about it is that every one of them, at the end of the day, is all about making learning experiences better for students. And I think that's really cool. So it's something that I wanted to share. I shared it at our last data presentation last year, and I wanted to share it again just because it's, it's so important about the culture that we're looking to create in our building, about everybody pulling in the same direction. So before we get into some of the data, it's important for me to just quickly review the different types of diplomas that students can earn under the current model. So the regents diploma is earned for students by showing proficiency, a score of 65 or above on one math exam, one science exam, the English regents, one social studies exam, and then one pathway, which can, for many students, is a second. Social studies can be some other option, such as career and technical education, ACEDAS, or one of the other exams that they may choose. The advanced regents diploma indicates that a student has pursued the most rigorous course of study on the regents level that we offer. So it's earned by showing proficiency on three math regents, two science regents exams, the English regents, one social studies regents, one pathway, like was described in the previous regents diploma. And then in addition to that, one of the following. Total of three credits in oral language and success on the checkpoint B oral language exam, or a five-unit sequence in the arts, or a five-unit sequence in CTE. So it's important to just distinguish what those credentials are before we start talking about some of those rates. So last year at Southside High School, we had a 99% rate for students earning a regents diploma at the high school upon graduation, which is consistent with our past year of 99% and 98%. Our regions with advanced designation rate is 90%, which again is consistent over the last, the last number of years with our students earning that, that high mark. It's important to, when we're looking at data, to have context. So it's always important to compare back to some, some metric that you can use for comparison. So the Nassau County regions with advanced designation rates for the years 21, 22, and 2021 were 68% in both of those years. The data for last year for Nassau County was not released yet, which is why we don't have that. So we included the historical data that we did have accessible. So what you can see here is that our regions with advanced designation rate is significantly higher than that of the county, which is something that we're really proud of at the high school. So further breaking it down by, by subgroups, our regions with advanced designation rate, 46% of our students with disabilities earn an advanced regents diploma. And in comparison, in Nassau County, again, we don't have last school year's data for that, similar to the previous slide. But historically, the year prior to that, only 21% of students with disabilities in Nassau County earned that advanced designation rate. Our economically disadvantaged students, 60% of those students earned an advanced regents diploma, compared to their counterparts of 51% across the county. Students who are considered historically disadvantaged by race, our Black and Latino students, 68% of them earned an advanced regents diploma. And again, for comparison, 47% of students across Nassau County in those subgroups earned an advanced regents diploma. So when we take a look at each individual exam, we're, we're happy to report that for every exam that's not considered a repeater course, we saw increases in every one of those subject areas in terms of passing percentage. We also included the regional passing gap, which shows us the difference between our, our students' passing percentage and the county passing percentage. So those green numbers indicate that we were 14 points higher in ELA, 13 points higher in geometry than the county, which is numbers that we're really proud of. As you can see on the column to the right, the mastery rate, which is earned by achieving a score of 85 or above on the regents exam, our, our scores are shown as such. So in, in subjects ELA, chemistry, global history, US history, we all show positive regional gaps, again, in comparison to the county. And we saw increases across all of those subject areas. So even though there were gaps that were in the negative in some of those areas, there were increases from the year before. And a lot of those rates in, in those exams, geometry, Algebra II, physics, are heavily dependent on participation. So I'll get into that in a future slide, because it's important to note when you're looking at those exams, who is taking those exams, which is something we'll get to in a moment. Subjects Algebra I and Earth Science are offered here at the high school. We position them a little bit lower because they are often taken by new entrants at our school and students who are taking it for a second or third time. As for, as you know, student, most students in our district take Algebra and Earth Science in eighth grade. So if you look at the sample size, last year we had 19 students take Algebra I, which was a combination of new entrants to our building and students repeating the class, and Earth Science, which only had three students in it. So we're constantly looking at ways in which we can support those students as well. So we offer regents review sessions. Those class sizes are kept at small caps to make sure that those students are getting individualized attention so that they can have success in those exams. So when you're looking at data, it's important to look at trends over time, so they can show patterns. And so we felt it was important to take a look at our passing gap over time over the last three years exams were offered. As you might notice, there is a, is a gap of time that's missing in there when exams were not offered due to COVID. But we're happy to show positive trends in terms of our passing gap relative to the county across all of those subject areas listed. And again, the small sample size for our students in Algebra I and Earth Science make us more susceptible to fluctuations and changes. But it is, it is always an area that we're constantly looking at to try to improve upon. So this slide is a really important slide that the BOSI's Data Warehouse puts out for us. It's the region summary for elective exams. And they refer to them as elective exams because these exams are not typically the ones that are used for the earning of the regents diploma. So if we take a look at this slide, I designated the first column, I'd like to draw your attention to it, with the green check. So on the left-hand side is Southside High School, on the right-hand side is Nassau County. So I'll start with geometry just as an example. So 84% of our students last year passed the geometry exam with a score of 65 or greater. Compared to the county, that green check column on the right, 71% of students in the county passed that exam. That only tells part of the story for these elective exams. So when we take a look at the next set of data, which is, would be the blue check, is the percent of the cohort that take the exam. So because these are elective exams, it's not uncommon for some students not to continue on in these courses. So at Southside, we had 97% of our eligible students in the cohort sit for geometry, which indicates to us that virtually all students are sitting for, for this exam. When you compare that to the county, only 85% of the students countywide who were eligible to take geometry took it. So what this tells us is that our students are outperforming the county in this subject area on the regents exam. But not only that, we're having more students access the course, which is a really important designation. The third point of emphasis is that orange column, which is the percent of the cohort passing the exam. And what that really does is it brings those two concepts together. It says, what percent of the, of the kids who are eligible to sit for this exam in your building actually pass it? So it brings together achievement and participation. So in our school, 81% of the eligible students in the entire building who are able to take this, and sit for this exam, 81% of them pass it. Compared to across the county, only six out of 10 students on average are in that same position. So if we look down further at some of the other elective exams like Algebra II, chemistry, and physics, we see similar trends. 92% of our students passed Algebra II compared to 84% of the county, but our participation rates were higher as well too. 82% of our students took it compared to 71% in the county. Chemistry was similar, 83% passing rate, 80% compared to the county. Our participation, 85% of our students taking chemistry compared to 67% of the county. And then finally, physics, with an 82% passing compared to 75% passing against the county, 69% of our students in the cohort take physics, whereas on the county average, only 30%. So what this is telling us is that not only are our students taking these challenging courses, but they're seeing success when they do. So you might be saying, well, why is this important? Why is this something that we should value? These are great indicators of post-secondary success. So when students are taking rigorous and challenging courses through their time here in, in high school, it positions them well to be successful in whatever it is that they choose to do. So students who are college-bound, this is a great marker for success at the next level. Even for our students who may be choosing a different path, going to the trades or going into the workforce. The world is becoming more complicated and complex. So it's really important for us to challenge our students to have skills that are acquired in courses like these when they leave us. We also offer AP math courses here at the high school. So AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, and AP Statistics. So we wanted to show the difference between our percentage of students who earned a 3, 4, and 5, which is deemed as proficient for these AP exams, over the course of the last two years. So we're happy to report that in Calc AB, we went from 26% of our students earning that 3, 4, or 5 up to 59% last school year. In parentheses, you can see what the county rate was, just for comparison. So the county was right there with us at 61%. In Calc BC, 71% of our students in the prior year earned a 3, 4, or 5. We were at 66% last year. Again, the county rate being 81%. It's important to note with Calc BC, for us at least at Southside, when we looked a little bit closer at these numbers, about 15% of our seniors take Calc BC. On average, the county, that number is about 10%. So whenever we're getting these, this information, we're constantly looking for more information to see kind of where it fits and, and see if some of those numbers are explained in that way. AP Statistics is a third AP math that we offer. 48% of our students the year prior earned a 3, 4, or 5, and that number jumped to 65% last year. So really proud of those, those numbers. We also just wanted to note that our, our numbers are remaining consistent in these courses. So our enrollment this year across the board in AP, in Calc AB, Calc BC, and Statistics are similar. So we plan to offer a similar, we're offering a similar number of sections as it relates to these courses. So this leads right into an analysis of our college-level math participation in 2022-2023 school year. So the, the three math AP classes that I mentioned before, along with our two-year IB math class that seniors take in their second year, the IB Math Applications Year Two, 82% of our students in the graduating class of 2023 were enrolled in what we would call a college-level math course. So when we, when we looked for a comparison to that, to see how other schools were, were doing, we, who offer AB, BC, and Statistics, on average, only 36% of those students in those, in schools that were non-IB schools, had students enrolled in one of these higher-level, college-level math classes. So in, majority of those schools don't have that course. So what, what this course tells us is it's allowing another avenue for students to make choice in their programming, able to take a rigorous and challenging course and be successful in it too. So again, why is, why is this important? Why is this, is this something that we should be proud of and celebrating? So taking high-level math courses helps students with really important skills that are needed at the next level. Critical thinking, problem-solving, logical reasoning. It also positions them really well to have success in college-level math courses that they take when they leave us here at Southside. So we're very happy to report that this many of our students are challenging themselves through four years of math to position themselves really well for success at the next level. We also felt it was important to share a little bit about the college-level course participation for our senior cohort last year. So for this, for the purpose of this exercise, we defined a college-level class as either an IB course, an AP course, or a course that we partner with a local university to offer college-level, college credit. level, college credit. Eighty-nine percent of our students in the graduating class of 2023 took at least one college-level class. Moving down the line, eighty percent of our students took five or more college-level classes over their time at Southside, and sixty-three percent took nine or more. So again, what this tells us and why is this important? This tells us that students are being prepared and are being encouraged to take challenging courses. So a question that comes up a lot is, well, how many of these credits transfer to colleges? And how can I use this? And where's this going to fit in in my child's college experience next year? And it's a difficult question to answer, and it's layered. And it really depends a lot on the university that the student's going to, depends on the major that the student's enrolling in, and where those courses fit into the plans of the student. But I would say this to any parent, that whether or not the student earns the college credit or is able to transfer for them is second to the fact that this prepares kids to be ready for the next step in their life. And so by taking challenging courses, these will position them well to be successful at whatever it is that they're planning to do in their next phase. So at this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Elizabeth Kross-Thisler to the podium for an update on the IB program.
Hello, and thank you for letting us share and celebrate our students' results with you and the community. As you know, the vast majority of our eleventh and twelfth-grade students choose to participate in the highly respected International Baccalaureate Program. Last year, four hundred and forty-eight students participated as junior or senior diploma or course candidates. Of the ninety-two seniors who were full diploma candidates, seventy-two earned the IB diploma. And this is a strong success rate of seventy-eight percent, which is in close relation to the global success rate of seventy-nine point six. We're extremely proud of this because unlike many schools who gate their programs, who require a certain GPA or require teacher recommendations, we welcome and encourage any student who wants to partake in this great opportunity. So ultimately, thirty-one percent of the graduating class left Southside with the IB diploma, testifying to their hard work and also their demonstrated readiness for college and beyond. So a moment ago, I mentioned that students participate as IB diploma or course candidates. And I'd like to explain the distinction for anyone who's unfamiliar with it. When a student is a full IB diploma candidate, they take three higher-level and three standard-level courses from each of six core curricular groups. And you can see those six groups to the right. Group one is English and Literature. Group two is World Language. Group three covers History, Business, Psychology. Group four are Sciences, which include Biology, Chemistry, Physics, Environmental Systems. We have Math in Group Five. And in Group Six, we're very lucky in the Arts to have Music, Visual Art, Theater, Film. So a really robust choice of courses. Now, the difference between HL and SL is really one of time more than of difficulty. HL courses require two hundred and fifty hours. So an HL course is always two years in length, while an SL course requires a hundred and fifty hours. So that could be a one- or a two-year course, depending on what best meets the needs of our students. So each subject is graded on a scale of one to seven based on multiple assessments completed over the one or two years. A score of four is considered satisfactory knowledge and understanding out of that one to seven range. So if a student is taking six IB classes and we have that score of a four in mind, students need a minimum of twenty-four points in order to earn the IB diploma. Okay? Additionally, diploma candidates also participate in what's called the central elements. They include Theory of Knowledge, the Extended Essay, and CAS, which is Creativity, Activity, and Service. And actually, students receive scores in Theory of Knowledge and the Extended Essay, and when combined, it can earn them up to three bonus points toward those twenty-four points of the total requirement. Now, for students who want to participate in the IB program but don't feel that the full diploma is the right option for them, they can register as IB course candidates. And this simply means that they're picking and choosing individual IB courses. You might have some students who are taking one course, you might have some students who are taking three or four, okay? Whichever level of challenge is right for them. And just like for their diploma counterparts, the courses are also scored on a scale of one to seven. They are weighted and included on the transcript. So as Dr. Walsh mentioned before, it's generally helpful to look at a range of years to determine how we're doing and to establish some context. So looking at the screen, the first row indicates the percentage of the graduating class who pursued the IB diploma from the years 2017 to 2023. The second row is the percentage of the class that actually earned the IB diploma. The third row shows what that translates to in terms of a success rate. And the fourth row considers the scores of every junior or senior who completed an IB course with a score of four or higher. So first, you might notice that the percentage of students who pursued and earned the diploma dipped. This wasn't a surprise to us because these students were freshmen when the pandemic hit, and with the stress and the instability of that time, there were students who chose not to pursue the full diploma, though many were ultimately course candidates. And having spoken with a number of IB coordinators across the Northeast, we were certainly not the only ones seeing this dip in numbers. Inversely, though, our diploma success rate, and to a smaller degree, our percentage of fours or better, are higher than our pre-pandemic rates. And before we move to the next slide, I do want to just point out the asterisks that are shown. These indicate the key assessment years that were impacted by the pandemic. So that's 2020, 2021, and 2022. So in 2020 and 2021, our students and many students around the globe did not sit May exams. But because IB has a multiple-assessment model, structures were in place where students were able to submit coursework assessments and receive scores. In 2022, May assessments did return, but they were, and the respective curricula, were streamlined to a good degree in recognition of the challenges that students had faced through the pandemic. May 2023, last year, was the first year since the pandemic started where we returned to the full-assessment model. Okay? So this should help provide some context for the next two slides. Okay. So here are our higher-level subjects, and if you recall, the higher-level subjects are those two-year courses. To the left of the blue line are our results from 2019, 2022, and 2023. To the right of the blue line are the global average results for the same years. Now, each year, we show you a comparison of the year of focus and the prior year. We've done the same this year with 2023 and 2022, but we also decided to include 2019 because it was the last year pre-pandemic when students completed all assessments, just like they did last year in 2023. So that potentially offers a better, like apples-to-apples comparison. Okay? So jumping in, to the right in the global results columns, you'll notice that all subject averages actually went down globally. And this isn't surprising since the IB returned to those pre-pandemic standards. In contrast, our student results actually went up in Business, in Physics HL, and in Visual Art. We even exceeded the global average in Visual Art, which is really great. But for the better apples-to-apples comparison, the green column shows the percent difference between our results in 2019 and 2023, again, the two years with the full-assessment model. We see a significant increase in the Physics, Visual Art, and Film averages. There are negligible differences in Chemistry and Bio, which shows us that our results are consistent. And Spanish HL actually caught our eye, but then when we considered the sample size of four students, that doesn't necessarily provide us with very helpful data. We took the same approach with our standard-level, or SL, subjects. Again, globally, all SL averages went down. Here, though, our Spanish SL average increased a bit, and we exceeded the global average in Physics SL and Math Analysis. Now, French, Psychology, Math Applications drew our attention, and we've already begun unpacking the results by requesting back assessments, dedicating hours of professional learning to examining them. And Dr. Walsh, the admin team, and I will be working closely with individual departments to further examine and address areas for development. I should point out, if you notice the double asterisks, I'm a fan of asterisks, clearly, I should point out that those that are noted with that, Spanish, French, Math Analysis, and Math Applications, those courses have been revised since 2019. So a comparison of results is somewhat limited, but it's still worth exploring. Lastly, I'd just like to highlight some subjects where students had exemplary results. Here, you can see the percentage of fours and higher in the courses. Some of these courses are more specialized with smaller numbers of students, such as Music and Theater and Physics HL. Others, however, like English and Spanish, are some of our most inclusive courses. So the results speak to and validate our efforts to provide access and opportunity for our students. And I would just like to thank the Board and Central Administration for all your support of these efforts and for your support of the program. Thank you, and I'll pass it back to Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, Liz. And before I get to the closing slide, I just want to thank you, Liz, for your leadership of the program. Really appreciate all the hard work and dedication you put into it. I also, just again, before finishing, one of our assistant principals, Mr. Moss, is here behind me. I just want to give him a shout-out as well, too. He's my go-to when I need a certain data report or anything, and he's always quick to get it from me. But even more important than that, it's not just that. He's the person I can go to and say, well, what does this actually mean, Ben? And how do we make our school even better as a result of this? So I thank him for that and for being here. So just in conclusion, the whole purpose of taking a look at data is to inform future action steps about how we can be better as a school. So one of the things I wanted to share out with you is some of the steps that we were taking as a result of some of the information we gathered through this process. So as I mentioned earlier on in the presentation, in October, we had a professional learning session with our faculty where we went over this data and we took a look at the results and put action steps into place about what were the things that kids did really well? Let's celebrate those and build off of them. And what are some areas within, either in our curriculum and/or in our teaching, that we could modify to make outcomes better for students? The issue with looking at data from the year prior is that we don't have those same students in front of us. So we needed a system to come up with that we could monitor student achievement data over time. So we give quarterly assessments each quarter, common assessments across grade levels, so that teachers can use that information in real-time while they have students in front of them and make adjustments accordingly. So teachers have been carved out time during office period times, during prep periods, faculty and department meetings, to take a look at this data so that they can collaborate to make decisions in the best interest of students and their programs moving forward. It's also really important for me, as a principal of a building, to have a good pulse of the building from our staff and from our students, not just from a data lens, from quantitative data, but from gathering information through conversation and observation as well, too. So as Mr. Gavin mentioned earlier on in the meeting, having that focus group with the ninth graders was really informative, and it's given us some ideas on ways we continue to engage students to learn more about the Southside High School experience. The survey that we had, the climate survey last year, is still driving so many of our efforts and learning about the things that we do well, but what are some areas maybe that we can enhance? I have a principal's advisory where I meet with about fifteen students across all grade levels, gives me insight and information about ways in which our school can serve students better. We meet with student government regularly, so gathering a wide swath of information is really helpful for us to make sure that we're continuously providing a world-class experience for our students. We're really excited to report out on the co-teaching expansion that has happened at the high school this year. I give a lot of credit to our teachers and staff who have bought in and are really working hard to make this model work. And ultimately, the recipients and the people who are going to benefit most are our students, both the students with disabilities, but also our Gen Ed students, I think, are going to really benefit from having two professionals in the room in so many of our classrooms. We've been meeting with teachers regularly during zero period, during monthly check-ins, and providing ongoing professional learning for them to make sure that this program was rolled out in a productive way. It's also important for us to continue to increase our parent communication partnership because the parents play such a huge role in the success of our students and our programs. So I'm happy to report out our fall parent-teacher conferences, which were done for the first time in a while at the high school, were a great success. And the feedback that I got was really positive, and I'm really excited about the connections that it opened up and lines of communication between our faculty and our parents, working together as partners to make sure that students are performing at their optimal level. We've continued our practice at the admin level and the counselor level of meeting with students and parents who are at risk. These meetings happen once a quarter. So these are really good opportunities for us to, again, from a team approach, work together on ways in which we can support our students who might be struggling. And we're also happy to share out that, again, we're going to have tenth-grade parent meetings with counselors this year because it's such a pivotal year in terms of scheduling and, again, opening up the lines of communication to make sure students are choosing the courses that make sense for them and ones that will position them well to set themselves up for post-secondary success as well. So looking forward to those, and I think those are really important pieces of the puzzle. The supports that we're continuing to offer for students are extra help periods in the morning. We have a math resource center that's dedicated to students throughout the course of the school day. We continue to offer support classes and lab classes for students. Our Homework Help program is very well-attended after school. We got support to extend it to four o'clock last year, which we're very grateful for because students are really taking advantage of that. And continuing to forge our community partnerships with local organizations to make sure that we're increasing that connection and reaching students across all parts of our community. And I'd be remiss if I didn't share just some really other, some other positive things that happen within our building that are not unrelated to successes that we see with students in academics. Our Sources of Strength program is vibrant and running really well. We serve about fifty students in that program with close to twenty-five staff members, and they send messages of hope and positivity throughout our school community, which is really great. Our Liberty Partnerships program is another way we mentor students and provide support. And as you can see, just going through the halls of this building after school, our theater, music, art, athletics programs are all thriving, and those are some of the more enjoyable moments I have as a principal, seeing our students in those elements because we really get to see who they are as individuals. So really happy to report out, again, some of the great successes that we've seen. We always know that there's continued work to be done, and we look forward to that, and we appreciate all the support that we consistently get in that work. So thank you.
Well, thank you, folks. As a whole, I want to thank Dr. Walsh, I want to thank Liz Niss-Lacrosse, and I do want to thank Mr. Moss as well. I know that Dr. Walsh talked about how Mr. Moss is great with data. He absolutely is. I ask him for questions all the time, and he's able to give it back to us, you know, very quickly in a way that makes sense and provides context to the data. So you're not just looking at something and saying, what does this mean? He's providing global and historical context to how we got here. So thank you very much, Mr. Moss. Liz Niss-Lacrosse is our anchor of the entire IB program. She knows every single class, she knows every single bit of the curriculum, and she does a wonderful job in explaining the complexities that go with that program. And we know that the IB program provides our students not only with, you know, an isolated bit of content like a course, it provides us with a context with it and allows us to see how systems function and function together and interconnect. So thank you very much for that. I'd like to open up President Barry, if you'd like to give the Board any questions or comments.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We love having you and for sharing your story. I love the quote, Dr. Walsh, that you started with. I think that's an amazing way and captures what we're doing, the work that we're doing across the district. Continuous improvement, right? Where are we? Where are we doing well? Where are we not there yet? And how are we going to get there? So that starts with backwards design. What do we want for our students when they leave Southside High School, like you said? So thank you very much for this work. I know there's a chock full of information here, so I think we're just going to kind of bounce around. I'm going to start with Ms. Nissler on an IB question. Given that we're working for those future outcomes for our students and in line with our philosophy for what we want for our students once they leave Southside High School, can you just expand a little bit on the portfolio model of assessment and how that is in line with what we want for our students and how that benefits our students?
Sure, absolutely. You know, I mentioned it earlier, one of the benefits of the program is that there's a multiple-assessment model. So, you know, students have multiple opportunities to show what they know rather than be caught on what they don't know. You know, multiple choice and memorization, if it's there, is a very small piece. So students have opportunities in all of their subjects, basically, to work on projects looking at questions that they have raised themselves, points of interest in the different subject areas. You know, I did an after-school PD yesterday, and one of our- You know, I did an after-school P D yesterday, and one of our math teachers was wowing all the elementary teachers with the sorts of questions and topics that our students have raised, like, you know, the physics of a vault for a gymnast. Our student, a gymnast, raised a question, looked at that. So many different ways that the students are bringing their own interests in. And what's nice is that as they're working on these projects, it's a process model, a portfolio model, where they are engaged in research, developing questions, writing and drafting, conferencing with teachers to get feedback, relevant feedback, timely feedback, and then going back to work through those ideas and refine their ideas. So that it's not just one exam, one day timed, and I hope you feel okay, it's proving what they're capable of over the course of the year or two.
Thank you. I'll hold off on my other questions for now. Just open up to the board for questions or comments.
I have one for Dr. Walsh. As you mentioned, you presented every year, right? We present all of the assessment data, the academic measures, measurable academic growth, and identifying areas of strength, identifying areas, you know, for continued work. When you presented last year, you were maybe two months on the job as principal of Southside High School, and now I just wonder, with a year's worth of experience, having gone through the building in all four seasons, would you say that the programs we have in place at Southside High School provide the most opportunity for the greatest amount of students? How would you characterize what we have in place at this time with your year of experience versus last year?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's always nice going into the second year because you have that, like you said, a year under your belt. So having had a chance to see it through the whole way, I remain so proud of and impressed of the way that we offer experiences and opportunities for students. So the answer to your question is yes. I think we do a really good job of providing opportunities, opening access for all kids to be challenged. So anytime a kid comes down to the counseling center and says, I want to take a course or I want to pursue a path, the student always has that opportunity. So I think that's so important that we set that expectation that when students want to challenge themselves, we're there to offer that. And having supports in place to help students who might be challenging themselves maybe to a point where they need some additional assistance. New course that we had that's only a few years old is the Central Elements Course, the T O K Central Elements Course that's offered in junior year, where we give support on the extended essay to students. We give support for their cast writing. We give them exposure to T O K. These supports are in place to help students challenge themselves while also having a place to fall back upon. And I think by opening those, access to those opportunities across all subgroups of students, I think you provide those avenues for kids to challenge. And what we've seen, what I've seen, is that when we give kids those opportunities to challenge themselves more, often than not, they rise to the occasion.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for all the hard work that went into getting the results that we see because I think there's a lot here to be proud of. Along a similar theme, data is obviously important, but the experience of the year and like what goes into, the totality of the student experience is also important. So just some things I've been thinking about. I'd actually be interested to see how many of our students are committing time after school to like extracurricular endeavors that are, I think these results are particularly noteworthy, given the fact that most high school students are out of their homes and not actually doing their schoolwork for a large portion of their day, whether it's sports, school sports, or outside sports, art, theater, music, whatever they're dedicating their time to, doesn't, at least judging by my experience with my high schooler and her friends, doesn't leave as much time as you would think for studying. But it's such a valuable part of the experience. And I also, like, I've been on the other side of teaching A P courses where, you know, kids stress all year, they get to the exam, and that's their one chance to show, you know, are they going to, the pressure, I don't think, I don't think it's easy to understand the pressure that the kids feel when the only assessment that they have is that one day in May, and they've, like, so much feels like it's riding on that. So I think it's worth pointing out that the IB offers so many other opportunities. So just, those are just some thoughts. One of the things that I did find just odd to me is that we score so well on English, but our numbers are not quite the same on the global and U S exams. And I know they're two different subjects, and I know the global and U S exams are new. But there's a lot of transferable skills, I would think, between like reading, analyzing, writing in those humanities courses. Any thoughts just on what's different about the English versus the history classes that might be tripping us up a little bit?
Yeah, I think that presents a really good opportunity to leverage one certain strength that we're seeing within the English department and carry it forward into some of those translatable skills that you mentioned. Because I think some of that writing component, that reading comprehension are all related and all tied. So one of the things that we're looking to roll out is joint department meetings where teachers can start to learn from one another and share skills that are transferable across subject areas. Fortunately, at times, teaching can be very siloed, right, where certain departments are just kind of working along on their own way. So it's important for us to kind of bridge that gap. So that's one area that we're starting to explore and I think could help in that regard to some of those transferable skills in writing and reading comprehension, apply them in subjects like social studies, which I think could be a really good opportunity.
That's great. I also, I do know that even just the terminology sometimes that gets used, like what's expected in a social studies essay for a thesis versus what's expected in an English essay for a thesis. Teachers use the same words, but it's not always the same thing they're looking for. So even just like having a conversation about that and making sure kids are clear on those kinds of things could be helpful. The other thing I was thinking about is, so I know the Blue Ribbon Report is brand new. It does seem like there's a lot of similarities between what New York State Blue Ribbon Commission is saying and what the IB program already is asking us to do. So I think that's actually going to work in our favor, and it's a positive thing for us. And then my only other comment is for the IB diploma participation rate. I actually am not that upset that it is lower. I think one of the things I used to hear amongst parents of older kids was that some kids felt pressure to take the IB diploma program because that's like what, a few years ago, I think there was more of a feeling that that's what you needed to do. And the fact that not as many kids pursue it, to me, speaks to maybe having a better understanding of what each individual student needs as opposed to just like this is the road that you go on just because everyone else is on that road. Wondering if you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I think that's a really important point to make, and it's part of the work, the ongoing work that's happening is I think these need to be conversations involving the parent, the counselor, the people who are involved in the child's education. And students should be taking courses that are appropriate for them and the ones that, where they feel challenged and supported. So I think what you saw, some of those trends, what you saw, there was a lot of things colliding all at once, right? Right around that 2020 year, there were a lot of factors that were happening that I think caused that dip, not just here, but globally. Covid, of course. But there was also a lot of increase in awareness in student mental health and well-being and balance. And your first comment, which I thought was really spot on, is kids are really busy now. They have extracurriculars after school, and they have a lot on their plate. So each case is unique, and each case has to be taken on its own. Each student's pathway, so to speak, should be taken into consideration. And I think we're seeing that in the trends. We're seeing it in our building certainly, of course. And I think it will make those conversations with parents even more important. So whether it's at parent-teacher conferences or in scheduling meetings, to come up as a team, what's the best course of action for that student?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, that reminded me of one question that I forgot to ask. In the IB totals, those are diploma candidates and course candidates together, right? There's, it's not one or the other, it's everybody.
Those are their results, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Just making sure that that's everybody who took the course for whatever reason, whether it was just one of their courses or the full diploma.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you all. First, I want to just start by saying, besides thank you to all of you and your whole team, what I've just seen over the years of being part of the board is just this real movement toward that individualized education, which I really appreciate. And I think that our catalog of courses that we offer, the amount of rigor that's offered, and just the opportunity and access for all, just leads me to feel that over the years, we've just continued to build upon this idea that we're so interested in the student's talents and aptitude and what they're able to do, what they want to do, and who they want to be. And all of this data kind of is leading me to really realize how much is offered to our students, so I just want to say thank you for that. I literally jumped out of my seat when I got this presentation for physics. I was like, yay, physics, so exciting, the improvement we've made in physics. Just seeing those things, and you really were humble about reporting that data. You mean, you showed it in its great form, but the comparison over last year to this year just needed to be highlighted, and I really wanted to compliment your team on that because it was a big, big difference. So great job in physics.
Thank you.
My world is higher ed, so I always am looking for, you know, not just the journey K to 12, but where we go later. And I still hope that at some point, we will do, and it's more maybe for administration, but a part two of this, which is that whole higher ed piece, as to where our students are landing, how they're finding their experience getting to their final destination. Is it their first choice? Is it the place they wanted to be? Are they pursuing the courses? And I do love that we do alumni nights and things like that where we get the feedback from students as to not just transferable credits, which I know you mentioned, and parents are interested, and I get it, but transferable skills and just, you know, approaches to learning that are helping them become who they want to be later in life. So to that end, we, you know, we've listened to our elementary presentation, we will hear our middle school one, and we talk about the state testing and the three to eight. But we kind of always talk about N W E A as like another way to assess how our students are doing. So here, we're talking about Regents, IB, A P. I'm curious as if you look at the data for S A T and A C T scores and how you utilize that data in terms of how we feel our students are doing on scales that are not only New York Regents-related.
Yeah, I think every data point that we get is an opportunity for us to take inventory of how our students are performing. So I think it's an area that we can certainly explore and take a look at because it is something that is highly relevant to their post-secondary success. That has been, you know, an interesting world with the test optional schools and trying to educate families and parents about what that means for their child taking that exam and then what it ultimately means when we get those results back. So I think it's an important conversation, an important question to have about what do those numbers mean and how do we use them in terms of a tool for students to figure out what it means for them as their post-secondary. So do I think it's an area that we can explore and further look at and help students break down what those numbers mean? What does this score mean for me? Where does this put me or position me in terms of my college prospects? I think it's an area that we probably can look at more. It's something that, you know, we feel proud that we offer, you know, the P S A T to all students because we value it, because it's something that we want kids to be prepared. It's part of their post-secondary planning. So what we do with that information, I think it presents us an opportunity to see how we're performing and how our programs support that knowledge.
Yeah, and to that end, I just want to compliment you for offering it the way you do for P S A Ts for students, that it's built into the day, actually the whole day built around it. I don't think I really realized that until I started talking to friends and colleagues that have students in other districts, that it was optional on a Saturday. The way it was administered was completely different, so I just did want to say thank you. I think that that's a great thing. And even though really 80% of schools are walking away from some of those scores for being qualifiers, and it makes the IB and the rigor and the A P and all of these other things that we do offer the best qualifier because being part of a rigorous curriculum is what they will look for more than they'll look at a score. But because our students are taking them and we have data and we have scores, I would just say that they're important enough to take a look at. And because Regents, we all know the world is changing. We don't know what that's going to look like four to five years from now in terms of how much they look at that data, just a data point I think we should consider.
And it's, sorry, Patrick, but I think the follow-up, one of the things that we're thinking about is having Ms. Ramsey come in and talk about that connection between high school and college, about taking a look into the data that we can get from Naviance, doing some conversations with our students when they come back for Alumni Day. So it's not just like where did they apply and who got in, it's also about how did you do when you got there.
Right.
So sometimes the survey data on that is not great, but the in-person conversations that we have during Alumni Day are usually very successful in trying to tease out what are the things they felt are successful and have prepared them for such, or what are the things they would like to have more.
Yeah.
So we just have to pick a date. I'm thinking sometime in the spring.
Perfect.
I just haven't figured out exactly. I was thinking June, but I have to take a look at what we have in terms of our presentations at that time.
Yeah, I think that that's definitely something parents want to know more about because especially if you haven't gone through that process yet, they want to have an idea. Also, just a compliment about how many students are taking those elective exams because I could attribute that to good education coming from your building. You do offer lots of information nights, your website is strong, presentations, guidance. So to Jen's point, maybe that education is also helping people to feel comfortable in their choices in terms of taking IB. But I would attribute all of that to good education, and thank you for that because I know your building does a lot of huge effort in terms of making sure that the parents feel good about the education that their children are getting. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time that was put into this presentation and for being here with us tonight. I am happy to see growth across many of our scores, both on the Regents exams, the A P, and the IB. I think obviously our goal is always to improve, and any improvement is good improvement. I do have some concerns about some of our courses, you know, and some of the results we're getting. And my concerns really are not directed at any specific person or at the teachers, and I want to be really clear about that. I think my concerns are very much directed at the system that we have in place that kind of governs academics in this district. You know, we talk about wanting to make sure that all of our students take rigorous courses, and I wholly agree, students should be taking rigorous courses. But I think there's nuance there because what is rigorous for you might be overwhelming for me. And the fact that as a student, I don't have much choice as to where I can go and when I can take classes, that overwhelming component becomes debilitating. When we think about the system, and my understanding of the system was put in place in the late 90s, early 2000s, as a way to ensure that all of our students had access to rigorous courses, which, again, I completely agree with, an open-door policy. We don't want to be gatekeepers. We want students to be able to pursue whatever pathways they want, and we are here to support them do that. But in doing that, we have, I think to an extent, you know, in doing this, again, we're doing this to get everybody into these courses to increase opportunity, to decrease gaps. But when I'm looking at a lot of the data, I'm still seeing a lot of gaps between students who are economically disadvantaged and students who are not, between our white students and students who have been historically marginalized by race, between our students with disabilities and our students without. And the gaps are wide. They're not tiny gaps, and that's concerning to me as someone who's thinking about the education of all of the students in this district. Like, I think we need to think more about that, that piece, as well as that we're here for everyone, and we need to have pathways for everyone. And the system we have feels constraining. When we look at our Regents data, I'm happy to see that the majority of our students are passing Regents exams. We know that that's important. You can't graduate high school for the most part unless you've passed these exams. But when we talk then about having rigorous, we're holding these students to this bar that is up here, but we're saying, we're just okay if you pass. Like, that's what we're talking about. That, to me, feels like a disconnect. I want to see the mastery rates, and to me, they're on the lower end. In some cases, our mastery rates are below the county average, especially when we're looking at our economically disadvantaged. looking at our economically disadvantaged, our students with disabilities, and our students who've been marginalized by race. Our potential is mastery, I think, is this district. I think a lot of people who live in this district moved here for that, for that potential. So I'm having a hard time with that. I'm having a hard time looking at those results and wondering why that's the outcome. So my big question is the why. Why are these the results that we're getting? You know, notice looking at Algebra II, Geometry, Living Environment, and Chem. There's a very significant difference between our students' results in those subjects versus ELA. Those ELA results should be our standard and our other subjects are not comparing to that. And again, I wonder why? Why are we able to perform in ELA, but we're not performing to the same extent in math and science and history's falling somewhere in the middle? So I wonder about that. I also wonder about, you know, IB. And I'm in no way, shape, or form saying that we should not have IB, so I want to make that very clear as well. I think we should have as many options as possible for all of our students. Again, going back to the system, the system is designed so that everyone can pursue an IB diploma. That's how it's designed. But only 31% of our students are getting that IB diploma. The other 69% are not, but they're still very much locked into a system that is pushing them at that IB diploma. So I wonder too, I wonder about the pathways. I wonder how we can add other alternative classes, other pathways for kids who might not want the IB diploma, who we listen to many of our community members talking about AP classes, wanting those AP classes, which again, to your point, there are pluses and minuses to both of them. We have community members who are asking just for grade level classes. So again, why does the system need to be designed in one way, towards one outcome, when the minority of our students are actually achieving that outcome? And again, that's not to say we shouldn't have it because if there are kids who want it, we should offer it to them. So, I mean, overall, like I said, I'm happy to see growth, but I don't think we're reaching our potential. And I don't know that we're helping all of our students to reach their potential, which is explicitly stated in our mission statement. So I do wonder what we can do differently to ensure that all students can reach their potential and the district reaches its potential as well. And I don't mean to be negative, it's just a concern. I do appreciate everything that's being done and I'd like to think about moving forward and what that could look like for our district. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the point about mastery rates is something that I want to emphasize too. Our goal with every Regents course we offer is to push students towards mastery. That is the standard that we set. We expect that and we hope for that for all of our students, so we want to see happen. As far as some of the gaps with some of the subgroups that were mentioned, I think it's important to note, by opening access and giving them opportunity to these courses, what we've noticed is that gap has closed, not only when we compare them over time here, but when we compare them to students of similar subgroups across other schools. So I think it's important when we're looking at those, not necessarily to compare them necessarily to other students in our own building, but how do they do across countywide too, right? That's important to look at as well too. I think, you know, those are things we want to take into consideration. As far as the mastery rates in some of our math courses, like geometry, Algebra II, physics, those elective exams, a lot of those are a product of participation. So our mastery rates could be potentially higher if we restrict more access to those courses. So it's not an easy answer or an easy solution and yes, there is work to be done, there's no question. And we're constantly looking at ways in which we can continue to get better and make those experiences better. There are just a lot of factors at play, I think, but by all means, that goal for mastery is something we set for every student in the building and it's a target that we have that's important for us to continue to strive towards.
And I also think to follow up on Dr. Walsh's response, you know, we added a number of new electives last year that we've never had before, including grade level classes, including another type of math class that students that may not want an IB diploma or something like that senior year would have the ability to offer. So, you know, with New York State coming out with 12 new potential recommendations, some of the word you used was pathways. And one of the things that is embedded in that 40-page report over and over again is the idea of students having a pathway. So one of the major recommendation changes that they talk about is going from advanced Regents diploma, Regents diploma, and local diploma to one diploma with different seals or acknowledgements. Meaning, for example, a student that does a lot of work with math and science might get a STEM seal. Now, they haven't announced what any of these seals are, what they would look like, but we do know that they've built some in like civic readiness. There's a seal of civic readiness now that you can get. There's a seal of bilinguacy that you can get for students that have an aptitude or proficiency or an interest in language. So I do think as that plays out, that we have a tremendous opportunity to look at how all of our programs fit in conjunction. And I think it's important to acknowledge that last year, when we made our course recommendations, we listened. And we have new courses and opportunities for students to take. Is everything done? No. But we do have, we do have a really strong academic program that supports our kids not only in high school, but prepares them for beyond. So I think it's important for, as we talk about pathways, that we also remind ourselves that our students, after they leave us, need to be prepared beyond us. So I think, you know, kudos to the entire high school team, we're doing a great job tonight.
I just had a-
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. To piggyback-
I forgot we were piggybacking back.
To piggyback off of that. My question was actually a merge of Dr. Downing's and part of Ms. Messy's. So I was going to ask you, Dr. Walsh, since it's been a year since you reported and now that you have a year behind you as principal, being that we did bring in these new courses that Mr. Gavin just mentioned, can you just speak to any changes that you've noticed or your staff has noticed, given those changes?
Yeah, actually. I had a nice conversation yesterday with our teachers who are teaching in the separate 11R class that we offered in English this year. And I asked them how things were going, we had a nice conversation, and they were happy to report out that they said the course is running great and the students are having a great experience. We have seven students in the class and they're able to cater it and run it to the level that their, what their needs are, you know, needed for. So I was happy to hear that and we're excited to see how that's translating. I think, you know, some of the other courses, the intro to statistics class is another one. Conversation with that teacher the other day, they're doing problem-solving, hands-on, problem-based lessons where they're doing real-world examples of statistics in real life. So I think these, those are two examples of courses that were new this year that are going off really well.
And the AP-
Our AP Computer Science, yeah. I was getting there, yeah. Our AP Computer Science Principles class I was in a couple of weeks ago and couldn't believe what the kids were doing already. Coding Python, working in our new lab that we had taken care of over the summer, which we appreciate, really modern workspace where kids are really feeling empowered to do that, really 21st century work. So that course is, I'm happy to report, again, that we're seeing a lot of kids have great value in it. We're excited to see what the next steps are as well too, as we're starting to plan forward about how we can meet their needs moving forward because we know the demand certainly is there.
Thank you. We're excited to. Any other questions or comments?
You know, just because we're talking about math and science, I think it's important to recognize, and I know Mrs. Hackett already mentioned physics, but in terms of the elective Regents in physics, the fact that about 30% of the Nassau County population takes that exam, yet 70% of our students take physics, and that's, I mean, that's where math and science come together, right? So that's really a look at a program as a whole, right? That 70% of our eligible students are doing, 82% are passing in that particular elective, very heavy STEM sort of course that many high school students never even get a chance to take.
Yeah, agreed. We're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thanks for being here. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Turning to policies, at stage one, we have 6550 leaves of absence.
I did have one question on that.
Yep.
I was just curious, like at different points, when we're like delineating the different reasons why people might be taking a leave of absence, there's a line on some of them that says the district will not retaliate against an employee for, you know, this leave or that leave, but it's not applied to all. I was just wondering if we should make that its own, like, statement at the end or just include it in each? I didn't know if there was a reason for that or not.
If I may, Madam President?
Yes, of course.
You could separate that out, that's a good suggestion, Janet. The reason it tracks this way is those specific statutes which have been passed since 2002 for all these various other kinds of leave, whether it be blood donation, bone marrow, you know, lactation, et cetera. Some of them have that language, some don't. But if the board certainly wanted to just have like a blanket statement that there should be no retaliation for anyone requesting any of these preemptive leaves, that would be fine.
Yeah, then you'd only need it in once instead of multiple times.
That's correct.
Okay. So can we add that?
Yeah.
There's also a typo. This is supposed to be-
There's a typo on number six.
On page seven, yeah.
Victims of domestic violence, yes, I meant to point that out.
Great. We'll adjust that. We'll update that. And I think there's two sixes.
There's two sixes.
Because there's witnesses or victims of crimes and then-
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
We'll correct that, thank you.
Thank you. So with those edits, are we okay to move forward?
Yes.
7230, dual credit for college courses. We took out transportation will be provided by the parents. Any other-
Just not necessary to have that.
Yeah. Any other suggestions?
I don't have any suggestions, but are there any universities that we have cooperative agreements with that our students are taking courses through, just as a point of information?
Yeah, we have an agreement with Stony Brook, we have an agreement with Malloy. Can't remember if we finalized the agreement going forward perhaps, but we're also looking at that, but we do. Students right now don't necessarily go to the, we offer the courses here, but we did have an interesting conversation with Malloy as well about the idea of, you know, maybe a nursing class or an intro to nursing class where the students would actually get to go see their health center. So we proposed that to the Director of Nursing Education at Malloy and we're hoping to hear back about whether or not that's positively accepted.
Thank you.
That would be good because they have-
They have an awesome system, yeah.
-the whole simulation lab and-
So that's what we talked about.
Mannequins as patients.
Yep. We talked about the whole idea of the students would take four days here and then maybe on a Friday or something like that, we would have to arrange transportation for the kids over to Malloy to kind of experience, even if it wasn't every Friday, maybe twice a semester or something.
Okay to move this?
Yes.
Yep.
No guarantees on that though, guys.
Don't know.
Guaranteed. Waiting on Malloy.
7241, no revisions required. Any comments or questions?
Still as long as it's in compliance with law?
Yep.
Yes.
We're just updating that.
Mara has carefully reviewed all of these with Mary Lou.
Yep, thank you. 7311, loss or destruction of district property. Also no revisions required. Okay to move this?
Yes.
7314, teacher removal of disruptive students from the classroom.
Well, that's my suggestion, and if I may, you know, this was part of, after Columbine, Project Save, Randy Weingarten lobbied for this sort of teacher rights, but no district really invokes this. In my many years since 2001, 2002, since Columbine, I've never seen any teacher want to do this. It is in the code of conduct because it's required under Project Save, which was promulgated in 2002 at the Columbine, but I don't think you necessarily need it as a policy since it is in the code of conduct.
It's definitely in the code of conduct already because I know we're looking at that right now.
You're looking at it.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Stage two, 8250, evaluation of the instructional program. Educational program, yes. Okay, we rename that. Okay to move?
Yes.
Stage three, 8110, curriculum development, resources, and evaluation. Okay to move this?
Yes.
8120, request for Part I variance or Part 200 innovative program waiver from Commissioner's regulations.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
8210, safety conditions in programs. Okay?
Yep.
8220, career in technical education.
Good.
Okay?
Yes.
8230, counseling program.
So the change here is that the regulations used to only apply to six to 12 and now does apply to K5 as well.
Right. And 8290, alternative school program. Oh, yeah. 8320, selection of library and audiovisual materials.
Yep.
Okay? And 8290, alternative program.
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
8320, selection, oh, we did that one, okay. 8331, controversial issues.
Good.
Oh, okay. Mistake, stupid. All right, okay.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve receipts of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?